If they're not how we treat each other, what are our works? If they're not what we say about each other, even with me, don't talk about this. Some will say, "I'm only human. I cannot give you, I cannot propose because of my own humanity and frailness." In the book, the love is God's. The proverb on it says, "Say that I am a human. Says that I am able to be more than I am now. And I'm able to be what God put in me." And he described a victory that was out of soil's leaves, advertised itself. And then when Jesus came, there was none of it. That's not me like that picture. That's bare fruit. Fruit of love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, judgment of self-control. But the Lord says this, "We have to resist the drive, recognize ourselves. This is how the world has to be." So let's see each other as a reflection of God's image. Let's talk to each other as a recipient of God's grace. Let's treat each other as a recipient of God's love and its praise. I would thank you for this morning. Thank you for this day's rising up and going down. Help us up to overcome our own humanity. Help us so God can reach into that divine heart of His presence. Help us to push toward your love. How we may do the difficult tasks we've been through. And we may make beyond our limitations and power of soul. You must remember that you told Joshua and Moses, "Have courage and do what is right and just." Is it in any prayer Jesus Christ in heaven? That's Jesus.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by nation and power, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Give you an idea of my perspective up here in the gallery.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. In Perry County, on Thursday, we had a tragedy of one of our youth. Lance Corporal Joseph Whalen, Marine, graduated his boot camp, was assigned Camp Pendleton. For his 13th week, facing the kinds of storms that really touched him to the blood. Unfortunately, he passed away at a lot of times. That is reading on your days where you've acknowledged statements and that you could put them on the side. Those are my.
I want to welcome the folks from this District Eight Six around Tennessee. We're here at the end of the July activity in our communities. We are still showing up and we're still speaking up in order that the voices of people who are no longer here get to stand and take back their voice. Your presence here today inspired the rules that have been made, shows that this movement cannot die. That the movement that lifts up the voices of marginalized oppressed people will be heard and will be seen. So for everyone, whether you're Republican or Democrat, or conservative, if you're kind of message chatting, you will continue to speak up and send emails and calls to your representatives. And you, this is your house, this is your representative office. You deserve to have your voice represented in this place. And also, on the bottom of the table, we continue to stand up for you to all of our baby of yours in the state of Tennessee since we had our session April of yesterday. There have been four shootings, eight shootings, it's high up in those rankings. There have been seven mass shootings, it's high up in those rankings. There have been 185 adults killed, there have been 356 adults injured, there have been 24 children killed, there have been 38 children injured, and there have been 250 suicides, there have been gun fires in our home. Those lives and experience of people who aren't in Tennessee, maybe who are not here with us anymore by all means, to give these headless shovels, including District Eight Six.
Representative Whitson. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, this is my correct address. Folks, I actually need to start my, uh, love around there, we're talking about the issues there. It's hard to tell definitely families, uh, or not as far as our parenting.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. Today is my little birthday, 20th birthday, not coming here today. Thank God, 20th birthday, y'all, this is our happy birthday, so we're celebrating this morning with our classes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, uh, many of my folks know, uh, my assistant, Megan, it's, she's currently out on leave. Uh, but she's out on leave for a good reason. I'd like you guys to welcome the war rolling, Amelia Catherine Hicks, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, I'm honored to have group today constituents from the entire district. I'm not gonna go by name, but we've got a large slew of markets, county, Alabama, Jones County, right there in Winkie County as well, so help me, welcome them.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Representative Dogg, I'm kinda making you the punch, Eric. Members, if you do, give another round of applause there over your folks.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, just wanted to briefly memorialize our member, uh, maybe that we've fallen aside, for Dr. Ben Johnson, Mom. Um, any of you who've heard of this a month ago, he was a dear friend of mine, a victim of gun violence in Memphis. Uh, Dr. Mom was a very well-known orthopedic surgeon. Uh, he was a highly respected defender of medical profession. He was a deeply devoted family man, uh, most proud of his role as a father, and always endeavored to remain true to his family values, but the highest order. Uh, I knew him as a Lambeth graduate, uh, from 2002. The Memphis community and the Lambeth community are still hurting for this. I just wanted to recognize him this morning with the mom on the side.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'm proud of today, um, to honor the type we lost to the Nashville, Nashville community. Father Charles Strobel. Uh, I was fortunate enough to know him as my friend, love to do him, we can do him as our. Father Strobel was a remarkable man. He did so many great things. That I can't even begin to act from his finger. Father Strobel's mother was murdered violently. And Father Strobel was a lifelong under death penalty. He chose to prepare the task for forgiveness for the killer of his mother and not have the stakes in that. Father Strobel poured his heart into the organization. The organization that served thousands and thousands unhoused in the scenes. He always asked everyone, every people gathered, to remember their own poverty or collective poverty. And be grateful for what we have, and take that as a rest portion. He humanized, I would consider to be non-criminalizing, he humanized, he lifted them up. Father Strobel was a true humanitarian, vibrant champion of justice. He is the essence of what I feel like was honorable to the scenes, the representative. So I'd ask for my colleagues to please, on the most excited, honor Father Strobel's quote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, there are two of our speakers today, they had birthdays, Mr. Zach Roberts and Josh Ross, sharing birthday. Please give a round of applause to this gentleman.
Representative Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'd like for you and the members to, ever being in a moment of silence of people in Bowery, that all the country, while this is frozen in hell, or you're welcome, actual disasters are taking place this morning. If we could remind ourselves of how blessed we are, be here to be in a place of harmony and peace, realize what these people fighting for at this time, so we could have a moment of silence, we appreciate that. Amen, thank you.
Representative Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I am honored today to have some constituents from the 71st District to my left. Y'all, please make me feel welcome, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, please have a welcome, my friend, my partner, your companion, my husband, his today.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I have the honor of recognizing a young lady from Clayburn, Tennessee, she tends Clayburn High School. She is the current wrestling champion this summer, she went to Europe, and she is now the reigning world champion in wrestling. So, uh, fantastic, thank you.
Representative Mark White.
Thank you, Speaker Saxton. Uh, now, now, I've known I have all my super interns. The end summer intern that I have this year is eight. And that even though she's from Memphis, she comes to us from the University of St. Andrews in St. Andrews, Scotland. Uh, she's studying modern language and comparative literature. And she's gonna be a heck of a citizen, world citizen, uh, when she finishes. She's got those qualities, all qualities that we all would like to have in our life.
Ms. Claire, Claire, right to us, Claire. Come on, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, please, members, please, House, Congress, and House, and I, welcome. A very dear and also that mine and now constituent of his, Bob Alston, he's up there at the gallery, good seat, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um, I wanted to recognize a dear friend of mine in Alabama, who is in Representative Vegas, this is Chris. Uh, um, dear friends, Ken Riddick and Matt Cradis, last, uh, lost their sudden, yes, their very own terrible lives. He was a light in this world. He, I, his mom was a mother of a very autistic kid in Knox County without a doubt. And this, this young man was just a light to everyone. And it's just so tragic that we want to remember, Ben Cradis shouldn't have a moment of sadness.
Thank you.
Introduce your resolutions, and I would recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that all citizens, probably filed, and we're 617, and my state, the town, or per, or per standing committee.
That's actually so, that's why we're considering resolutions, we're graduating, we're memorializing that, if you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that all citizens, all citizens, congratulations, we're memorializing, like the rest of the places in town, so we're 17.
Without objection, so.
Resolutions final. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that all citizens, final, they're per, per standing committee.
That's actually so. Introduce the business, I would recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 103, 114, enter some best of first consideration.
That's actually so. City deals on first consideration, city deals on second consideration, hospitals on second consideration. If I can recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 102, 112, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, 119, 202, 202, 206, 207, 209, 30, 31, 33, 34, 37, 41, 47, 49, 60, 68, 71, 73, 74, 75, 79, 5, 64, 86, 98, 99, on number one. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, if I said, if I said, yeah, from per, consideration, keep moving on to.
And if I said, if I said, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not so, uh, this speaker, no, this is why, anyone see, represent, on the state count, it's a day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, after consultation with both leaders, I'd like to request all members voting in affirmative. We've not already signed on to HGR 23, will be added as co-prime sponsors.
Without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, item number 49 on the ballot today is a resolution honoring our newest Medal of Honor winner, happens to be from Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Very proud to bring this resolution again. After consulting with both leaders, I would ask that everyone should be in the affirmative, be listed as a prime sponsor, with the Hamilton County delegation members being listed first, thank you.
Without objection, so.
Thank you, Speaker, on item number 29, HGR 14, for Johners, Ms. Bael Johnson, W D I A 1070 A M, radio personality. After consulting with both leaders, uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm asking that all those voting in the affirmative, be added to the resolution with the Shelby County delegation being listed first.
Without, uh, without objection, so.
Good thing, Mr. Speaker, now, after consulting with both leaders, I ask on item number 31, H R 0018, honoring the death of Detective Jacob Arthur Jake Bowe, that all the Rutherford County delegation be listed as prime co-sponsors.
Without objection, so. And, uh, we're voting on the state count, or all members, favorite vote, I have a very interesting question. As every member votes, you can change the vote. Mr. Parker.
Eyes 26, no names, one president, I'm up.
Have you seen Consciousment, 23, 36, got a badge, without objection, so.
I can finish business.
All right, members, we have several procedural issues here in order to be able to get the bills that were passed in first and second consideration, if convenient, that would be the following motions that I'll be making today in consultation with the correct leader. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move the House bills 1, 3, 12, 28, 50, 54, 72, 74, 75, 79, 5, 43, 64, 86, 98, 99, on number one. You heard of the Civil Justice Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the House bills 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 26, 27, 29, 30, 31, 33, 34, 37, 41, 47, 49, 60, 68, 71, 73, 74, 75, 79, 5, 64, 86, 98, 99, on number one. You heard of the Civil Justice Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 2, 23, 42, 59, 61, 63, 76, 92, 93, 85, 97, 122, 38, 96, we heard the 18, 12, Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 9 and 35, heard the Higher Education Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 39, 33, and 78, we heard the 58, Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bill 6, 4, 8, 25, 36, 52, 58, 67, 66, and H R 16, 22, we heard the Health Society this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 32, 65, 69, 98, we heard the Insurance Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 44, 90, and H R 15, we heard the Transportation Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the House bills 7, the American Public Service Subcommittee this week.
For the motion, the objection, without objection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, this question is for, I believe, or the clerk. Have any bills that have been filed, that have been assigned, bill numbers, not been assigned to a committee?
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, that set of bills, 1 through 102, I believe, just passed second consideration this morning, they will be entered into the computer and referred to committee, uh, as soon as I can get them in after session. They're public.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, so, um, I, I just want to make sure that no bills that were tightly filed about 4:30 on Friday, which were on first reading last night, secondary, and this morning, have not been assigned to a committee. Have they all been assigned to a committee?
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, yes, every bill, 1 through 102, which passed second today, have been assigned to a committee. No questions.
And does that negate the requirement for us to put any bills on notice to be heard in committee? One.
Mr. Speaker, the bills that would be on notice are pursuant to the motions that the leaders. No questions.
So, the legislators don't think we take any effort to have those bills heard in committee at this moment?
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, that's correct, they have been placed on notice through the motions that the leaders. All right, Jim, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you for the clarification.
Representative Jones, we're ready to finish business, or is there something that you need to add?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, of course, we're, uh, I know Tennessee's not broke, we got plenty of money. Why is it so hot, Mr. Johnson? I couldn't even think, uh, you know, what I wanted was, oh, on the front, it's hot outside, it's hot in here. But the classroom's hot down the road, I think it's probably. I do the answer, Mr. Speaker, okay?
We've been working with maintenance and, uh, Mr. Carpenter, we're trying to work with, and it's real near.
We need to find somebody, get somebody to do it. I just need one more day.
Man, hot.
Representative Haraway, we're ready to finish.
Thank you, Speaker, uh, back to Leader Lambert, please. Just one clarity, that each bill, Leader Lambert, each bill would be put on notice by actions of Leader Lambert, and there will be no obligation on the part of the, the sponsor.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the question earlier was, has every bill been, uh, referred to a committee? Yes, they have. All the bills that have Senate companions are what have been put on notice pursuant to the, uh, motions made by the.
Representative Haraway.
So to be clear, all the bills that have Senate companion bills are automatically on notice per the actions of Speaker Lambert. Freudian slips of Leader Lambert.
Mr. Speaker, those motions that 10 are made, put all bills that passed second consideration today, and all bills that have a Senate companion on notice.
Representative Haraway.
Thank you, Speaker, I'm trying to get a, a follow-up response. Any bill that was filed that has a Senate companion bill will be put on notice through actions of Leader Lambert.
Let me, let me clarify, Leader Lambert made a motion, if your bill was read on second consideration today, which means it was filed tightly on Friday, to get to second consideration today, has been referred to committee. Part B of that, if there is a Senate companion with that House bill, that bill is automatically put on notice in that committee. If there's no companion bill, it is not put on notice. Representative Haraway.
Thank you, sir, that's kind of a straight answer I was looking for.
Yes, sir. I'm finished business, Eric Lynn Parkinson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mr. Speaker, and just to further clarify that, if, if, if your bill was not automatically put on notice, it is your job to put, I mean, to put on calendar, is your job to put it on calendar, correct?
Well, the bills that weren't put on notice did not have a Senate companion, so unless you find a Senate sponsor, that bill would not be put on notice or heard. Representative Pierce.
I know, I know we were talking earlier about security issues and things like that, but we had a philosophy to the Capitol room to protest, and the voices who are in this extreme weather, and the water fountains here at the Capitol simply have been turned off or not, or can we speak to that?
That's an inaccurate statement, that is not accurate, we can check, that's been a misrepresentation. Next up, Representative. Powell.
Representative Powell. Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, I had a question about, uh, when we can expect to see these calendars. Um, I just checked the websites and know, so the public has access to know when these committees, committees will be meeting. You know when those will be posted on the website, when we can expect those committee calendars to.
Mr. Speaker, once again, the bills that passed second this morning, they will be, their referrals will be entered into the computer into the electronic system shortly after our session. Once that is done, then pursuant to the motions that the leaders made, calendars will be made and sent out and posted to the website.
Representative Pierce.
Uh, were you saying that the issue has been remedied, that the water fountains are working in the Capitol?
No, I already said, just water fountains have never turned off and they were functioning, that I understand is what we think. Representative Pierce.
So right now, with your understanding, all the fountains in the Capitol are working?
I'd say they have been working, there was none that were turned off, that's correct. Representative Pierce.
Thank you, we're glad that they're on today.
They were on yesterday. Representative Haraway.
Thank you, Speaker, and I was negligent, um, earlier. Even though I referred to Leader Lambert as Speaker Lambert. When I made the introduction earlier for Miss Clara Hutton, I should have addressed her as Speaker Lambert. She was elected on Capitol Hill, uh, twenty twenty-two. So, Mr. Speaker, you're not the only member of the Speaker of the House.
That's great. That's great. Representative Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, one follow-up. Every bill that has been assigned to a committee, are we to be given assurance that every one of those bills will be heard and considered by the committees to which they were assigned?
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, those bills that were part of the motion will be calendared and substituted committees how those bills will be treated once the committee meeting starts.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I apologize, we've been gone for a few months. Maybe a bit rusty this. I did not explain fully beforehand. Every single bill that I just made a motion, I would go to the committee. So if you heard that number and if you were curious, if your bill was amongst that number, please see afterwards, I've still got the paperwork on my desk. I would be more than happy to go through that, check that thing one. Uh, I moved through relatively quickly because that's probably the way we do it. But all of those bills that were announced in those motions earlier will go into committee counters today tomorrow or however long our deliberation takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Jones, under unfinished business.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And as we're talking about committees, I'm specifically to answer as to whether members were stripped in committee will be restored to their rightful committees that you're more than promised.
Your order. Next word, Mr. Clerk. Announcements. Announcements, any announcements? Any announcements? Representative Jones, would you point?
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. Uh, can you explain how my question is out of order? Why you signed my microphone? Can you explain? Under what rule?
Mr. Speaker, we were on unfinished business at the time of the question.
So members can ask about the heat in the building, but I can't ask about committees if my constituents sent me here to represent them all? Is that what you're telling me?
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Speaker, Representative did not present any unfinished business at the time that you asked a question about many assignments.
Representative Jones.
So ask me about the room temperature is, ask me about unfinished business, but ask me about many assignments tonight. Can you explain how what is in order, what is not in order?
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, the Speaker of the House makes rulings on what is, uh, in order and not in order under any particular order of business.
Representative Jones.
So, Mr. Speaker, my question then is to you back to, um, the parliamentarian. Why do you rule my question out of order when you did not rule a question about that we're outside this vote?
Representative Jones, um, you asked, I think, Mr. Clerk, on right of heart, whether in question, which would go to the clerk. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
So we're moving on. Announcements. Any announcements? Seeing none. All right. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, I have the schedule for today. This will be posted online shortly. Uh, today at noon in Room One, Higher Education Subcommittee. Noon, Room Two, Transportation Subcommittee. One P M, Room One, Civil Sub. Room Two, One P M, Health Sub. Three P M, Room One, Criminal Sub. Room Two, Insurance Sub. Room Three, K twelve. Room Four, Public Service Subcommittee. And then it's anticipated that the full committees will meet tomorrow, um, starting at eight A M with State. And Transportation at eight thirty at Room Three. Insurance, Room One at nine A M. Civil Full, ten A M, Room Three. Health at noon in Room One. Criminal Full at two P M. Room Three, Education Administration. Four P M, Room One.
All right, there's the schedule. Here's the committees. These committees only apply to the special session. They do not apply to regular session. They only apply to special session. Ag Natural Resources Chair Todd, Vice Chair Darby. Meeting members Fritz, Grills, Hardaway, Harris, Holsley, Hurt, Jones, Marsh, Martin, Pearson, Reedy, Rich, Shaw, Travis, Bible, Pryton. Ag Subcommittee Chair Grills. Members Darby, Fritz, Halsey, Jones, Pearson, Reedy, Shaw, Todd, Travis. Civil Justice Committee Chair Farmer, Vice Chair Geremy. Members Brinkin, Bolso, Catholic, Elders, Gant, Garrett, Grills, Harris, Hill, Lambert, Littleton, Parkinson, Powell, Russell, Stevens, Todd. Civil Justice Subcommittee Chair Russell. Members Bolso, Catholic, Eldridge, Farmer, Grills, Hill, Lambert, Parkinson, Todd. General Children and Family Affairs Subcommittee Chair Littleton. Members Brinkin, Farmer, Gant, Garrett, Harris, German, Powell, Stevens. Commerce Committee Chair Vaughn, Vice Chair Brinkin. Members Alexander, Barrett, Boyd, Burkhart, Camper, Clemens, Faison, Freeman, Garrett, Hell, Hardaway, Paeson, Hazelwood, Holswell, Johnson, Lynn, Marsh, Moon, Powers. Sparks, Thompson, Towns, Bible, Williams, Zachary. Banking and Consumer Affairs Subcommittee Chair Powers. Members Barrett, Brinkin, Camper, Faison, Garrett, Lynn, Sparks, Vaughn. Business Utilities Subcommittee Chair Boyd. Members Alexander, Burkhart, Clemens, Reedy, Hell, Holswell, Johnson, Marsh, Thompson, Vaughn, Russell, Zachary. Criminal Justice Committee Chair Halsey, Vice Chair Lesk, Members. Carinter, Davis, Doggett, Farmer, Fritz, Lynn, Hardaway, Powell, Johnson, Lambert, Moody, Russell, Towns. Criminal Justice Subcommittee Chair Doggett. Members Davis, Fritz, Lesk, Hardaway, Powell, Halsey, Johnson, Lambert, Moody, Russell, Towns. Education Administration Committee Chair White, Vice Chair Slater. Members Vaughn, Bolso, Butler, Spiget, Fritz, Gant, Lesk, Faison, Hurt, Jones, Lafferty, Love, McKenzie, Parkinson, Reagan, Richie, Stevens, Warner. K through twelve Subcommittee Chair Paeson. Members Bolso, Hurt, McKenzie, Richie, Slater, Stevens, Warner, White. Higher Education Subcommittee Chair Lafferty. Members Vaughn, Butler, Lesk, Faison, Love, Parkinson, White. Education Instruction Committee Chair Moody, Vice Chair Rager. Members Vicki, Chisholm, Cochran, Darby, McKenzie, Lynn, Lake, Hicks, Johnson, Leatherwood, McCallum, Pearson, Reagan, Todd, Warner, White. Education Insurance Subcommittee Chair. Members Chair Vicki, Members Chisholm, Lynn, Lake, Hicks, Johnson, Leatherwood, McCallum, Moody, Reagan, Rager, Warner, White. Finance Ways and Means Committee Chair Hazelwood, Vice Chair Vaughn. Members Barrett, Boyd, Camper, Cochran, Crawford, Faison, Freeman, Gant, Garrett, Hawke, Hicks, Keasling, Lambert, Love, Lynn, McKenzie, Miller, Moon, Parkinson, Shaw, Sparks, Whitson, Williams, Zachary. Finance Ways and Means Subcommittee Chair Hicks. Members Vaughn, Camper, Cochran, Faison, Garrett, Hawke, Hazelwood, Love, Moon, Shaw, Whitson, Williams. Proprietary Subcommittee Chair Williams. Members Barrett, Vaughn, Boyd, Freeman, Hazelwood, Hicks, Keasling, Lynn, Miller, Sparks, Sparks, Zachary. Government Operations Committee Chair Reagan, Vice Chair Reedy. Members Bolso, Camper, Carr, Chisholm, Clemens, Crawford, Elders, Faison, Lake, Emmer, Hill, Keasling, Kumar, Lafferty, Lambert, Littleton, Marsh, Martin, McCallum. Health Committee Chair Terry, Vice Chair Leatherwood. Members Boyd, Carinter, Clemens, Faison, Farmer, Lesk, Lake, Hawke, Ames, Emmer, Hicks, Hicks. Both Hicks, German, Kumar, Martin, Mitchell, Rudd, Cheryl, Travis, Vaughn, Whitson, Williams. Health Subcommittee Chair Hawke. Members Hicks, German, Leatherwood, Martin, Mitchell, Cheryl, Terry, Williams. Population Health Subcommittee Chair Carinter. Members Clemens, Farmer, Ames, Emmer, Kumar, Rudd, Terry, Travis. Insurance Committee Chair Kumar, Vice Chair Martin. Members Catholics, Vicki, Davis, Freeman, Ames, Emmer, Hicks, Hill, Johnson, Johnson. Lafferty, Mitchell, Richie, Rudd, Rudd, Sparks, Terry, Thompson. Insurance Subcommittee Chair Ames. Members Catholics, Vicki, Emmer, Hicks, Kumar, Lafferty, Martin, Mitchell, Rudd, Rudd, Terry. Local Government Chair Crawford, Vice Chair Pryton. Members Alexander, Burkhart, Carr, Doggett, Hell, Ames, Holswell, Love, Martin, McKenzie, Miller, Moon, Pearson, Reagan, Reedy, Rudd, Shaw, Slater, Stevens, Thompson. City Subcommittee Chair Moon. Members Alexander, Crawford, Hell, Holswell, McKenzie, Slater, Pryton. Elections and Campaign Finance Subcommittee Chair Rudd. Members Burkhart, Crawford, Doggett, Ames, Miller, Moon, Pearson. Property and Plains Subcommittee Chair Carr. Members Crawford, Martin, Rager, Reedy, Rudd, Thompson, Pryton. State Committee Chair Elders, Vice Chair McCallum. Members Alexander, Brinkin, Butler, Carinter, Chisholm, Dixie, Faison, Holswell, Hurt, Turner, Johnson, Keasling, Leatherwood, Littleton, Miller, Powell, Powers, Rudd, Terry. Departments and Agencies Subcommittee Chair Holswell. Members Brinkin, Carinter, Chisholm, Elders, Faison, Keasling, Littleton. Corrections Subcommittee Chair Hurt, Butler, Elders, McCallum, Miller, Powell. Public Services Subcommittee Chair Rudd. Members Alexander, Dixie, Elders, Johnson, Powers. Transportation Committee Chair Powell, Vice Chair Bible. Members Burkhart, Butler, Camper, Carr, Cochran, Darby, Davis, Lynn, Grills, Harris, Hazelwood, Hicks, Jones, Marsh, Martin, Powell, Powers. Rudd, Russell, Cheryl, Towns, Whitson, Pryton. Transportation Subcommittee Chair Whitson. Members Carr, Darby, Lynn, Harris, Hazelwood, Hicks, Tim, Hicks. How, Marsh, Russell, Cheryl, Towns, Bible, Pryton. Calendar Rules Committee. Chair Zachary, Vice Chair Hicks. Members Camper, Clemens, Crawford, Darby, Davis, Elders, Faison, Farmer, Hazelwood, How, Halsey, Kumar, Lambert, Marsh, Moody, Reagan, Sexton, Terry, Thompson, Todd, Towns, Vaughn, and White. Next word, Mr. Clerk.
Well done.
Progo. Mr. Clerk, take a break. Mr. Speaker, I sent a word to the press. Their drivers are right to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have the House standard recesses about nine A M on Thursday, August twenty thousand.
Now the bills will be going behind the committees. Because the times that are going to be published, actually the first one is at noon. So there's really not a lot to announce around here. Which is that hopefully sometime in the world.
We just.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have the House standard recesses.
They're working all the time. These people, these bills, take the information to other constituents. So the constituents can say, yes, I like it or I don't. You know, there's no time to let go.